Within the department. And whereas Jason has held several specialty assignments, which included Cadet Advisor, Resident Foothill Deputy, Assistant to the Met U Task Force Team, and most recently, Code Enforcement Deputy. Jason is always willing to assist others, maintain open communication with his peers and supervisors. Jason is very enthusiastic about his job and the service he provides to the citizens of Yuba County. And whereas in January 2021, Jason was selected for a new specialty assignment to the Code Enforcement Deputy focusing on quality of life issues for the citizens of Yuba County. This position works hand in hand with the Code Enforcement and the Heart Team concerning transient issues and different code ordinance violations. He held this role solely for several months and hit the road running, knowing that this is something serious and important for our community. His work numerous investigations addressing transient camps, excessive blight, neighborhood complaints, nuisance of resident issues. It is an ongoing issue that seems never ending, but when driving around our local community, you can see the huge impact his efforts have made. And whereas Jason has taken a significant amount of reports for trespassing, drug possession, and other miscellaneous violations, he has authored numerous search warrants. And when you listen to the radio, you'll often hear his badge number throughout the day as he never seems to stop. Jason has a positive attitude, which is contagious throughout the department. His work ethic, dedication to our agency, and pride in our community is to be commended and is why he was selected as the Peace Officer of the Year for 2021. Now therefore, we're almost over. The Yuba County Board of Supervisors commends Jason Valentine for his service and commitment to the citizens of Yuba County and congratulates him on being selected Peace Officer of the Year 2021. Congratulations.
It's a representation of the department and the community without the leaders all standing in the background and the citizens, my wife and my family supporting me throughout the year. This is for all of us. It's not just for me. Thank you to all the command staff and everyone that supported me and gave me this opportunity along the way.
County Super Yuba Board of Supervisors Honoring Officer of the Year 2021, Bridget Jackson.
You can run, but you can't hide.
Here goes hard part. Honoring Officer of the Year 2021, Bridget Jackson. Whereas Bridget Jackson has been chosen by her peers for recognition as Yuba County Probation Department Officer of the Year for 2021. And whereas Bridget grew up in the Sacramento area where she attended local schools and graduated from John F. Kennedy High School in 2003, she is currently pursuing her Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice from the California Coast University. And whereas Bridget worked at Millhouse Children's Services from 2006 to 2016 as a mental health counselor, providing intense mental health services to committed youth prior to starting her career in 2017 with Yuba County. Whereas Bridget began her Yuba County career as an extra help juvenile corrections officer in May of 2017, and was quickly hired full time as the Juvenile Corrections Officer One in July of 2017. She was promoted to Juvenile Corrections Officer Two in July 2018. In December of 2018, she was promoted to her current position of supervising Juvenile Corrections Officer. Whereas Bridget has proven herself as one of the department's top officers, gaining praise from her colleagues, local agencies, and community members, she is viewed as a lead mentor and is regularly called in to represent her department in very difficult and significant manners that require her direction. She was instrumental in developing our new Training Officer Program, which has been a great success because of her leadership. She exemplifies our mission and vision through her heart of service and complete commitment to the tri-county youth and her team at Yuba County Probation. Because of her dedication, spirit, and determination, she has earned the respect of the Yuba County Probation Department. Now therefore, and the Yuba County Board of Supervisors commends Bridget Jackson for her service and commitment to the citizens of Yuba County and congratulates her on being selected Officer of the Year for 2021. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to thank my team for always leading me and trying to be better. They will be here if they'll support me.
Ever done that before? Okay. That was the best part of the day. So if you have anything else you need to do, it's up to you. You can leave now, but that one's really, really important. I'll tell you, we really honor and respect our law enforcement. It doesn't get any better than who we have. So appreciate all of you being here for that presentation. And again, if you'd like to hit the road, you can do it in the back. It's up to you, but you can also stick around. So public communication.
Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a Request a Speak card and submit it to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to comment, please use the raise hand function or star nine if participating on a phone. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading.
Do we have any public comment?
To the chair, yes, we do. We have, first one is Bijan Parhisgar. I'm sorry if I said your name wrong. You want to come forward, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Bijan Parhisgar. It's nice to be at your company. What I would like to start first is thanking the Board for passing a resolution recognizing people's freedoms, rights, and liberties with regards to masks and mandates. Kudos to you guys. Good job. As a civil servant and representative of the people, I strongly believe one should act in ways to maintain increased trust, integrity, and reduce confusion when it comes to dealing with their government. Public perceptions and reactions are important and oftentimes shall not be brushed off as just mere perceptions. I would like to offer only one example, minor example it may seem like, but nevertheless it will be an example. Through meeting with more than one public official, it is my understanding that money and grants come with strings attached in different forms and colors. And that is very evident by the check-in procedure as you enter this building. A sign says masks required. The deputy informs you masks are required, but it's not enforced. Please realize I'm not complaining about that. I'm very appreciative. The sheriffs of both counties do not enforce the mandates. I was told by Mr. Barnes last year that he's not enforcing the mandates. But many of your constituents don't know that unless they dig in. So they're left confused. They see the resolutions maybe, and then they come in and say mask required. They don't know if it's enforced or not. So in my opinion, that can lead to erosion of confidence in your government. Having the signs out there will probably bring you into compliance with the conditions the funds are released for you or to you. But by agreeing to such, you're also acknowledging the fact that you are bowing to an overreaching central government that provide, recommends one size fits all approach, and I don't think that's right. Would you please consider taking the signs down or put them somewhere else so your public does not get confused? I'll probably bring up Mr. Flores's hiring with the City of Marysville as part of this topic. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. For your information, the masks have been optional at Board of Supervisor meetings for a long time.
Thank you, but the sign in front doesn't mention. It still provides confusion. I have to basically do not comply and ignore deputies.
Okay. Thank you. We'll work on that signage.
Thank you.
Second person we have is Ray Morgan.
Good afternoon or good morning. My name is Greg Martin with the Ray Morgan Company. Thank you for seeing us today. I've been with Ray Morgan for 43 years. I have Leon Ellis with us. He's been a resident of Yuba and Sutter Counties for 60 years, went to local high, local schools here. We have Reed Skar for our sales manager, and I just wanted to say that we're a big part of the local community. We're actually, I don't know if you know the subject, we're talking about the recent copier bid, and we have some ideas, some thoughts, concerns that Leon wants to go into, but you know, we have 450 employees in California, 100 in Sutter, Yuba, and Butte County, and a local office here with 10 employees. I just want to establish that we're a big part of the local community, and I'll let Leon discuss some of the things about the bid.
Good morning. Basically, we want to, we'll thank you again, but you know, we were looking for just to get a play, a fair and playing field for, you know, the responses in the bid. And there was a couple of concerns that we had. One is initially in the criteria or the value, the weighted value of some of the criteria that was needed to make the decision was stated in the RFP as a pass or fail. Then the criteria, once the bids were opened and the responses were put in, there was a value weighted to a pass or fail. And the definition or the clarity for us was a little difficult. You know, we, and we asked for some clarification and asked for information. We requested it via email, and we never got a response to it. So I think that it impacted all bid responses, you know, so.
Yeah, and I think having, when we asked for the, via Public Information Act, we asked for the current contract information. I think that would have given us a lot of information that would have helped us give a more responsive bid. And without having the contract information to see where volumes were, what was changing during COVID and remote working, I think we missed out on being able to, and other vendors too, of being able to give the best possible price and really right size. What we were forced to do is respond for a like for like. If you had a 50-page per minute copier, we put in a 50-page per minute copier. But that was five years, six years old. What has changed in that time via volumes and via evaluation of workflows that could in A, give you guys all lower costs, and B, incorporate technology? We asked to give a technology presentation because we think that is so vital. We do that. We have probably 20 counties within the state of California, and every one of them in the most recent upgrade or change has incorporated a lot of technology to help become more paperless, streamline workflows, reduce staff costs, and become more paperless. And I think I'm out of time, so.
Okay. You've run your three minutes, but feel free to send me an email to that effect. I appreciate you being here today.
Yeah, we just want a chance to submit. I think everybody submit another bid to incorporate some of those things that for the best interest of you.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Third person we have is Charles Sharp.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
Charles Sharp, Oregon House. Many things are out of your control, but you do have the power of the resolution where the where has whereas rules. You have the power to pass a resolution that a regional approach is needed to ensure a reliable and abundant source of water for the Yuba foothills, water for fire protection for the farmers, and water to help protect the supply of well water. With this water, the future looks good. Without this water, the foothills face a future of drying up and burning up. I hope the Yuba County Supervisors will take notice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That is all the cards, and also via Zoom, there's no one. Ms. Wahlberg is going to go ahead and comment on an agenda item, correct?
Okay. County Department's item number 50-2022. Yuba Sutter Arts Council Adopt Resolution Approving the Application and Authorizing Execution of a State-Local Partnership Program for Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture with the California
Good morning, Chairman Bradford, members of the Board, staff, Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture staff, members of the public. It's my great pleasure, I'm David Reed, Executive Director of Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture, to be here to make our annual presentation, also to request the annual renewal of our status as the designated arts agency for Yuba County, representing the county to the California Arts Council, which opens up a great deal of state funding to come into the community, and also to make our annual request for local support. Just want to run you through the basics, bring you up to date. Some of this has been in place for a good part of our 41 years. This is our 41st anniversary this year. Our basic mission is we want to make the community kind of to change and make them think about art and culture. We've got a terrific leadership team, our executive board, our board members, including Supervisor Blazer as the Yuba County Representative. We're a nonprofit, as I said, founded in 1981, again, representing the California Arts Council in both Yuba and Sutter Counties. We're the only two county arts agency in the state. You know, what is art? You know, you can add, probably add to this list, but we cover the gamut. We're not just visual arts, we're performing arts, everything from decorative arts to architecture. That's a pretty broad bit of coverage, and we think we do a pretty good job. We added culture to our marketing name a couple of years ago to cover all of that other, the unique aspects of Yuba County, the history, the great diversity that we enjoy here in the community, which is very unique among our rural adjoining counties. And I, as a big city boy from LA and Washington DC, really appreciate that, and we need to value that as an additional asset. We provide a variety of services, including consulting to our local government agencies, whether it's utility box mural projects in Yuba City, mural projects in Yuba County. We met recently with Rachel Downs and Dan Peterson, consulting on a beautification project at Friendship Park and the Lindhurst Parkway. We do make grants. We are in fact now in the business of re-granting money. We got a major grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, $150,000. That is for us to give away to local arts organizations. We're very strong in arts and education. It's one of our biggest portfolios. We've done a lot of veterans' arts projects and arts and corrections, both at the high school level and up to and including the two county jails. We're home based here in Marysville. Of course, you're familiar with our beautiful theater at the corner of 7th and E Street, which we've recently painted and kind of refurbished. The insides are gorgeous, beautiful 120-seat theater, and the art gallery and office space next door. Last year, we acquired the Sutter Theater. We've been involved with fundraisers over the years, and through the good graces of the Sutter Performing Arts Association, who did the heavy lifting, we were given that theater, now called the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts, which includes the Black Box Theater, the Art Trium, as we call it, kind of the lobby concession stand, bar, and then the adjoining theater art gallery. I mentioned arts and education. We've done just so much in that area. Some of you have personal experience with some of these programs. Poetry Out Loud's been going on for 15 years locally. We're now fully in charge of the Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards Program, which we started four years ago in collaboration with, when Jessica Howgan was the curator of the Sutter County Museum. Very Special Arts, some of you are familiar with this. This is our annual arts program. It's on hiatus this year again, unfortunately, due to COVID, but it's where we provide special arts programming for special needs students in both counties. We collaborate on a number of levels with Yuba College, including consulting on a new mural project on the side of the theater. But we do, we host speech contests, student and faculty art shows. Our youth programs in terms of performing arts include our youth choir and our Applause Kids Performing Arts Programs, again, and all free of charge to participating students and families. Many of you are familiar with our veterans' programs, including our portraits of veterans, the Veterans Art Park that we built in Marysville a few years back with murals designed and created by veterans speaking to their time and service. Most recently, we've had veterans' ceramics projects for veterans as well as their families. Community art, we have a very strong representation, a couple of the big murals we've done in Marysville, the Murals of Liva Project, which is about to renew. The city came to us a few years ago and said, hey, we'll put up 20,000 a year if you'll match it. We find matching grants and then created a whole outdoor, we kind of call it an outdoor art gallery, if you will. So I'm very proud of those beautiful murals and then, of course, the utility boxes. There were two in Marysville, and we hope to add to those, but we've got quite a few in Yuba City. Cultural programs that we bring in, Yesterday Frida, we've got the Dia de los Muertos programs that we started, World Music Series, we bring in a variety of outside artists to perform locally. And we even hosted, this is fascinating, I learned so much during our birthday celebration for Guru Nanak a couple of years ago. I think you're familiar with the Assembly, our Bogey Assembly Center Memorial Park Project. We collaborated with the JACL, the Yuba County Historic Resources Commission, of which I'm now a member, and created kind of in an artful way, I think, a park that recognizes what went on in 1942 when Japanese Americans were put into these assembly centers while the permanent interment camps were being created by the US government. That park on Broadway is, kind of tells the whole story. You spend 30 minutes out there if you didn't know anything about that part of our history. It's very informative, each of those large murals have a QR code that has a docent or a survivor of one of the camps telling their story or their family's story. This is a new project. This is one of the things we've started since I've been involved with the Yuba County Historic Resources Commission, where Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture will ask, act as the fiscal agent, if you will. So if we're able to find grant money to support this project, we'll begin a sort of a, well, it's an outdoor history trail where we put these large format signs professionally designed and mounted in various historic sites throughout the county. We'll create a paper trail guide, and eventually we hope to create an app. So you go to, you know, what's going on in Yuba County in terms of history, and ultimately we hope events, people can go to this, access it. And again, we'll have QR codes with professional actors, docents, telling the story of that particular site. We're partnering with the Mary Island Museum, and pretty excited about that project. We should see the first couple of signs in place by the summer. Special programs, we hosted a first ever Yuba Sutter Short Film Festival. Local filmmakers put together short films, 12 minutes or less. We've been a part of the committee forming the Film Commission. I think you've heard a presentation from Marnie Sanders, and provided some funding for this project, which will help market Yuba and Sutter Counties to the filmmaking world, which is a great tool for, again, development through art. Harvest the Arts is our biggest fundraiser of the year at John Higher Farms. Probably won't happen again this year. The Ag community is the major sponsor of this program, and they're still recovering like so many other sectors, so, but we're hopeful. Cotton Rosser Project, here in Marysville, we're the, again, fiscal agent for this project. It's a $270,000 project. We're about a third of the way there. This will be a one and a quarter times life-size statue of Mr. Rosser in Plaza Park, just to the right of the Baqai Temple and the Silver Dollar Saloon and a little park area there, about seven tons of bronze, and it turns out that's a lot of money. Grant projects, we've done, as I mentioned, the projects in the continuation in community schools, we've taken students on field trips. Most recently, we took Joe Lloyd and his Marysville High School art students to the Crocker Museum. That was about two weeks ago. I went, it was amazing, the level of engagement with those students, some of whom had never been to Sacramento, so one of our grants paid for all of that. Virtual programming, during COVID, we had the choice to kind of go dormant or do something. Well, we decided to mount a whole program of, series of programs of virtual interview programs, poetry hours, songwriter slams, they're called. We've got a few of those we've kept because we get deep engagement through Eventbrite. We've been able to reach folks throughout the state. People are tuning in from all over, watching our channel, if you will. Pretty exciting. We've got our galleries open again. This was an Indigenous Artist Gallery Show we did last fall in the Marysville Gallery. This was about the same time Raj Kholan, who grew up here, went to UC Davis, now lives in Berlin, internationally known artist because of her work speaking to violence against immigrant population. Rocky Horror Picture Show is like one of the most popular things we do, so it'll be back this fall around Halloween. It's silly fun and takes us a couple of days to clean up after. It's a, it's a great event, so. Let me, let me get to the point here. You've heard me rattle off a few numbers, but I just want to point out what your support of our organization brings into the community in terms of dollars and cents. These are grants that we will receive or have already had committed to us for this year. Outdoor Equity Grant Program, that'll be $200,000. The NEA re-granting grant I mentioned, that's $150,000. You're providing a resolution renewing our SLP status. We'll bring $130,000 into the community from the California Arts Council. Two other grants from CAC, the Jump Starts, that's the Education for At-Risk Youth Program. Impact Grant Projects, Dead Art is another grant. We've applied. Impact Grant Projects, Dead Art is another grant we've applied for and received, that's another 20,000. Relief Foundation, that's the project where we're planting trees at Yuba College, other school campuses, OPUD throughout the county. The Rosser Bronze Statue Project, I mentioned. Other miscellaneous grants, 100,000, that's over the next 18 months or so. So just to give you a sense of, you know, what the, what the dollars are. So it's, I would suggest it's a pretty good investment. We're a membership-driven organization, but anybody wanting to get more involved in what we do, you can buy a seat, buy a star. We'll put your name up in lights, whatever it takes to engage. We're pretty active on social media, that's what that was, so find your information that way, or you can always go to yubasutterarts.com. Thank you, and again, respectfully, I would make the request for funding in the amount of $10,000. Thank you, any questions?
Questions, comments from the board?
One comment, thank you very much. You, you sparked an explosion in, in Yuba Sutter Arts. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Through the chair, I, I'll just echo that. It's amazing, all the events that you guys are putting on and all the programs. I think there's always something going on, so thank you for that.
Hi, David. Couple of, couple of quicks, couple of quick questions. You already, you know, explained to us how you've consistently produced an amazing array of cultural events for the community. I think you told me one time, but how does the art, the local Arts Council compare or rate in the state?
The last time we did this, in fact, I should mention, we're back to one, once a year, having to ask for the resolution. The last time was the exception, it was a two-year SLP, so the dates we had to change were council. But typically, when, two years ago, when we were awarded the full amount, which at that time was 100,000, so it's up a little bit, we were in the top 10 arts councils regardless of size, Santa Barbara County, San Francisco, LA. We were right up in there, even though we're a smaller rural community, our six out of six rating, that's the highest you can get if we were in that top tier.
Then for me, can you explain how the resolution is needed to qualify the council for potential government programs or grants?
It's a, just a annual ask or bi-annual in case the last cycle. It's something that's required by the California Arts Council. They want to know that, there, there are 58 states, as you know, or 58 counties, as you know, in the state, 54 of which are represented by Yuba Sutter Arts and our counterparts. There are lots of other arts, arts organizations, but to be recognized as the official state local partner, the California Arts Council requires a resolution by the county board of supervisors.
So it's essential?
It is, absolutely. In fact, I'm finishing up the grant now, and as soon as I find enough to approve the request, we'll plug that into the grant, send it off, and wait for the final word.
Well, you know, we, most of us get this in the mail.
Oh, good.
It's overwhelming, the amount of things. And the legal, latest publication from the Appeal Democrat, their events for the year. You have what, 50 to 70% of the activities listed in that book?
It's aggressive, yes. We're very, very grateful to the Appeal Democrat and the support we receive from them. It's, it's really phenomenal.
And I appreciate your persistence during the pandemic. You came up with tricks and things just to keep things going.
Absolutely.
So hopefully that has passed. There's a lot of, there is a, well, we're, now it looks like we're on our way out of this. The rap, the mandates are rapidly being dropped, so we're hoping that things are going to get back to normal next week. That's our plan, so.
Hope.
Okay. All right, well, appreciate your, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Just to expand on that, I think you guys have a board meeting tomorrow night?
We do.
And is that on the agenda?
Always.
And so what, what is the direction that you feel that people are heading as far as the board?
I'll, we'll act at the direction of the, of the Board of Supervisors. Of course, we dropped the mask mandate since it was done statewide. As of today, we are still, we don't have any events for a couple of weeks, so we get a little bit of a hiatus. But if we had something tomorrow night, we would still ask for negative test or, or proof of vaccination.
Mr. Bijan, if I didn't mispronounce that name, earlier brought up a point of mixed signals that we give to a community, and we don't want to do that. We want to be transparent and clear about the direction we're heading. We did pass a resolution talking about mandates versus voluntary compliance, and we want to make sure the signage is appropriate to what we actually enforce. And we want to have the organizations that we're partnering with also be communicating that same message that, of course, if you want to be vaccinated, do so. But we're not going to mandate or require that and partition or segregate society to not be allowed to engage in those activities. And so I'm hoping that your board will see that and work in that direction tomorrow night?
Have a spirited conversation about it, I'm sure. Thank you.
Through the chair. One of the things that concerns me is, I happen to be a veteran, and as a veteran, sometimes you're a little stranger than most, they say. But it's, there's a whole group of veterans out there that are underserved and forgotten. And some of them have chosen to not be vaccinated. And I would venture to guess that veterans probably have more of a war in the water than most, as far as civilians go. And I would hate to think that, that they couldn't go, go here because of that. And I think that unless, unless those restrictions are dropped, I can't support, support you in the spending of public funds because they are part of the public, and they have served this nation, and they deserve to be able to walk in that door. So I, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's a condition I have for supporting this.
May I respond to the chair?
Certainly.
Just, just to be clear, our, our policy, first, we took the masking policy down, which is very clear on our, our website. We took the masking requirement off as soon as the state mandate went into effect. We do not require guests to be vaccinated, never have, never will. However, if you choose not to be vaccinated, and that certainly is within your rights, whether you're a veteran or just a civilian, we do ask for a negative test, which are widely available. We have staff who have had very serious personal issues related to COVID. It's my responsibility as executive director to keep them safe, along with our guests, our performers, whether it's Cotton Rosser coming into our art gallery and his age, and, or major donors of ours, one of whom's had a heart transplant, whose immune system is, immunity system is compromised. As, again, as the buck stops here. But again, we'll see what our board has to say about the issue. So I totally respect your point about veterans, and I couldn't agree with you more.
Well, you made your choice, then.
So David, is, is there a timeline on this resolution that needs to be either passed or not passed today?
Absolutely, well.
What's the deadline?
The, the deadline for me to hit submit on the grant button is, is March 9. Submitted to Sutter County last week, and it was approved, and I've already gotten the resolution. So I understand, everybody's got a different perspective, so.
So our next board meeting is on March the 8th. And, and it's really the board that passes whatever your stance. It's the board through the council that makes that decision, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is there any public comment?
Through the chair, yes, we do, we have two.
Should I stay here?
Yeah, you, you certainly, don't, don't leave, let me make that clear. But if you can just step aside for a moment, and we have a couple others.
First person we have is Sandra Malo.
Board Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for letting me speak. Wasn't it long ago that this very board passed a resolution against vaccine passports in our county? This very board, and I applaud you for doing that. Now you want to make a resolution, a partnership, if you will, that gives taxpayer funding, your constituents' hard-earned money to the Yuba Sutter Arts Council, who requires us to show our papers to enter the venue. Some of you may argue, well, you can provide a negative COVID test. No, I don't want to go to pay, to go in and pay, try to locate a test, which potentially could give me a false negative and, and contains dangerous chemicals. That's my personal belief, and my religious beliefs as well. Same reason I won't take the vaccine. You're taking my money to fund this arts council that limits my freedoms, which you have been elected to protect. That's your job. What happens when you don't do your job? You get fired and replaced. What happened to the resolution that you passed with a majority vote? Your public declaration that you would not have a vaccine passport here? Have we forgotten what you agreed to? No, I don't want my dollars going to this council unless they agree to drop the testing, masking, and vaccine requirements. That needs to be part of the resolution. Table this item until an agreement with those terms have been reached. I'm tired of people putting me in a category of being a danger to society because I'm not taking the vaccine. I still see folks in the ICU that have been fully injected and have received a booster. Those people are still spreading COVID. Where is the promotion of eating healthy, exercise, and vitamins? A majority of sickness could be cured this way. Let's mandate folks to get healthy. Sounds absurd, doesn't it? Honestly, I am not against the Arts Council. I think it's a fabulous program. I'm against their infringement on my rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have one more?
Through the chair, if I may, let me make something extremely clear. My funding request has nothing to do with the resolution. It is a totally separate issue. The resolution is simply to reauthorize Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture as the representative of Yuba County to the California Arts Council.
Great.
Second person we have is Donna Walberg.
Thank you all for being here, and I just got to say, I really appreciate the process that's gone on here this morning. I appreciate all of your thoughtful and considerate questions in approaching this issue. And I have a feeling you're probably going to make a good decision based on what I've heard. And I'd like to also say, I'd like to applaud Mr. Reed. I think he's just done a fantastic job with the Arts Council. I mean, really, I'm very impressed with all the things they're doing, and I very much missed, I don't know if, can you guys hear me okay? I very much missed participating in, in the many events that they've had. I have participated to a degree because I've been outside protesting because I couldn't get in because I'm unvaccinated. So, but it looked like they were having a lot of fun in there, and he's just done a beautiful job with the theater, and, you know, I wanted to participate as a emerging artist in the, submit some of my photography, but I wasn't vaccinated. And I don't like, I don't want to be, have my privacy infringed on. So anyway, I think you're going to make the right decision. I think it would be a good idea to continue this until the 8th and see what they do at their board meeting. But I, I urge you, please, do not grant, grant this resolution unless they lift this policy because it's discriminatory, it's unconstitutional, it's exclusionary, and it is just not right. And especially with the trend that's going on in the country anyway. I mean, the, the policy is extreme compared to, you know, what's really happening. And so I just ask that unless that discriminatory, discriminatory policy is lifted, that the resolution not be granted. And so, yeah, thank you very much. I think you're going to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person we have is Bijan, Parti czar.
Thank you again, good morning. I'm here to state my opposition to supporting the Yuba Sutter Arts request at this time. Again, as I mentioned, Sutter County passed the resolution on September 14, 2021. Yuba County passed resolutions recognizing people's freedoms and liberties with mandates. On September, I'm sorry, 14, the first one was September 2nd. Shortly after, Yuba Sutter Arts announced their plans for reopening, however, decided to install draconian, overreaching mandates on everyone who wants to enjoy the arts and has supported them in the past, including myself. I have a, I have been a supporter of the art center. I've attended many of their events before, and I have nothing against their art or what they do. They do a good job. But they were totally ignorant of the will of the people and of the two councils in the region by installing these mandates. Their COVID policy, as of last night, printed it, it's about nine pages long on my printer. Granted that there was a lot of other stuff with it, but as I'm printing it, it's nine pages. And obviously, they're not hurting much for money as Mr. Reed rattled off a whole bunch of funds of sources that comes to them and to the region. The 10,000 they're asking is not going to cripple them, but I think your board, or this board, is at the position to demonstrate a fundamental principle, basically. I ask you to please stand with your constituents and act in a way that you mean what you say when you do the resolutions. I'll be happy to go under oath and state my experience at the very first day of the opening of the Yuba Sutter Arts. And here is my statement and my encounter with Mr. Reed. I went there the very first day, and I've had encounters with Mr. Reed before. I walk in, the door is open. There is a staff of five or six people, non-wearing masks, and Mr. Reed as well, not wearing a mask. We exchanged greetings and niceties, and we both mentioned the Southern California, that's where we came from. And one of her, one of his staff told me, sir, you need to be wearing a mask. Said, well, you are not. Mr. Reed jumped in and mentioned to me.
I'm sorry, you're, you're just out of time, so if you'll wrap that up in a moment.
Thank you. He said, well, we've known each other and worked with each other for many years, a long, long time, as if the virus distinguishes that. If you step outside with me, I'll be happy to explain to you. And as he's telling me that, he's going for his mask. We go outside, he tells me, this is a nonprofit organization. The Board of Directors has mandated that on us. And I see at least, recognize one of the members of the Board of Directors here today. And later on, through Mr. Sean Harris, he told me, it's not my decision. He's a member of the board as well. It's him.
So I, I think we've got your point, so thank you for speaking today. We appreciate that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. So let me, let me bring this. Is there any other participants? No. Let me bring this back to the board. I, I would propose that we table this until the meeting on the 8th. I am very interested to see what their board has to say. I can tell you personally, I, I think you're a great asset to our community. I am 100% behind what the culture and the Arts Council does for our community. You, you really give us a lot, and you've put your heart and soul into this, and it's unfortunate that you can be brought into a political issue. But here we are. At this point, I really would like to hear from the full board in their discussion and what comes out of that meeting. So appropriately, I have a motion to table this.
Can I ask one question for clerk?
Okay.
Is the 8th convenient and sufficient, or would it be better if we, does it necessarily have an emergency meeting earlier, after your board's?
I would appreciate that, and let me explain why. I don't know if any of you have been involved in grant writing. You may have been. This is a big one. It's the biggest of ours because of the pipeline of funding it brings into the community that we'll be compromising if I'm only half a, half an SLP going forward. I'm just suddenly the Sutter Arts Council. The stress, the pressure of putting all the elements together, letters of support that I've gotten from the EDC, from the Yuba County Office of Education that are part of this grant, waiting for that one final document because the narrative in the grant refers to all the work we do on both sides of the river. And if you put that on me on the 8th, I don't know, I don't know that I can do it. I'm pretty good, but I don't know if I'm that good to rewrite that.
So if we were to have a meeting on Tuesday next week, and after seeing how your board acted, we reacted, then that would be sufficient?
If that's what it takes, yeah, and I would, again, make it, please, please remember, the grant request, the pennies per person in Yuba County that we're asking for is a separate issue. If you choose to punish us by not allowing that amount of money to come forward, that's fine. Don't punish me on the SLP issue. The resolution must happen, or we're in big trouble.
If we didn't make the motion to be that we have an 8:45 meeting on Tuesday morning, after we've reviewed what your board does tomorrow night, that way on Tuesday morning, 8:45, we could then make that resolution at that time?
You know, this, this didn't happen overnight. This is not a surprise to you. Okay, so I, I think that I'll stick with my original motion.
I think the motion is fine, and there will be time, and I will work with you, David, coordinating things that are coming in the next week. I'm sure that we can have a special meeting. We'll arrange for that, and it can happen. So we'll just coordinate and come up with whatever is appropriate for you and the full board because a number of us are booked and other, we have a tight schedule. We will make it happen. How's that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
I second. I have a first and a second. Comment from?
I just wanted to make sure we got the second.
Very good.
I was gonna make sure.
All in favor for tabling at this meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we have it. So let's communicate really close. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, item number 55, 2022, Community Development and Service Adopt Resolution, authorizing submittal of a request to the State of California of Housing and Community Development, HCD, to commit 915,000 in Community Development Block Grant Programs Income Funds to the CDBG Owner Occupied. Boy, this just goes on and on. Kevin, give us a presentation here.
Before I use the resolution, I were seeking to submit $915,000 of our Community Development Block Grants Program Income Funding to our, which, that's CDBG, to our CDBG Owner Occupied Rehab Program. A little bit of background on this, in 2019, we came up with the idea of using CDBG money to purchase properties, rehab those properties, and sell them to people that would have a, that needed to be low to moderate income, and those properties would have a 20-year deed restriction to them. You know, fast forward, 2022. In 2019, the housing market was upticking, but not to the level that it is today. And then COVID happened, and we had issues with supply chains and a lot of other things. And so at this point, we don't really think that the Acquisition Rehab Program would be viable or a good use of the money compared to putting that money to our Owner Occupied Rehab Program. And what the Owner Occupied Rehab Program is, it's a program that allows people of low to moderate income to receive money from CDBG to repair their property. And as of the last time I talked to my staff, we have had 70 people on a waiting list in the county seeking to use a CDBG funding to repair different parts of their property. Also, a little bit of background on this, we have an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to perform some of the repairs for our Owner Occupied Rehab, and they have a list of over 40 people that are seeking these repairs. So we have over 100 people seeking to use money, CDBG money, and staff thinks it's a good idea to transfer this money from the Acquisition Rehab Program to the Owner Occupied Rehab Program. I'm here to answer any questions your board might have.
I've got a quick question. Good morning. So what's the income level threshold for them to qualify? And this is just in unincorporated parts of the county, right?
Yes, so the income level, to make 80% of the the average income in Yuba County for a family of one, it's 53,000. And then that goes up for the number of people in a family. So a family of four, it would be 75,000. Would meet the, would be the high end of the 80% of the average income in the county.
And then they're granted a certain amount of money?
Yeah, so a little bit on the Owner Occupied Rehab Program. We have a loan committee in Yuba County made up of staff, and they came up with some guidelines a few years back. And one of the things that I think is really great about the program is there's a $15,000 grant. So the first $15,000 for any repair is a grant. It doesn't need to be repaid through a loan. And anything above $15,000, so if someone needed to get a re-roof done on their house and the re-roof costs $20,000, they would get a $15,000 grant, and then they would be required to, the remaining $5,000 would be through a loan program.
Some kind of low-interest loan, I guess?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
So, tell me this, is it restricted to any given area, or is it focused only on any? It's countywide, or does it have anything to do with fire protection in the foothills?
It is not geographically restricted, it's income restricted. So if there was a repair that someone needed to make on their property and it qualified for the program, and that property owner qualified for the program through income qualification, then they would be able to utilize this funding.
And for advertisement purposes, how do we communicate this to the public to let them know if this passes? That if they qualify, and they should be trying, how do we go about doing that?
That's a really great point, and it's something that we are waiting to do. The problem that we've had with this is we've, as the staff report has mentioned, we've conceived, we thought of the idea for the Owner Occup, or the Acquisition Rehab in 2019. We have approval in 2020 for the allocation of these funds, but we've still been waiting for HCD to give us the final authorization to spend the funding. And my staff was in communication with HCD last week, and they said, as soon as we get the authorization from your board through this resolution, that they're ready to sign the standard agreement. And one of the things that we plan on doing in CDSA is coming up with a marketing strategy or getting the word out either through newspapers, social media, any way we can to let people know that we have this fund.
Very good. Thank you. Back to the board.
To the chair. You recently came up with a map laying out some of the momentum that we've built over a period of years as far as the development, where we're going, what we're doing, and it's difficult to convey to the public without the use of a map and a list of the different projects. Is there a chance that we could have a presentation on that one map at some point in time?
Yes, through the chair, we definitely can do that. I know that we were planning on, or Community Development was planning on providing quarterly updates to your board on development in the county and what's going on where, and in number of permits and things of that nature. But I can, I can follow up with the clerk of the board.
I have a smaller version of that map in the next room if you want one.
Any comments, question from the public? Hearing them?
I so move. I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Go for it. Item number 58, 2022, County Administrator. Approve proposed mid-year budget transfer in the amount of $10,804,433. Oh, and no sense, what a deal. And propose that mid-year personnel request.
All right, good morning, board. Sean Powers, Assistant County Administrator. A quick budget update for you. Sorry about the technical difficulties. We still had some arts council stuff on there. So part of our budget process is halfway through the year, we do a little check-in and true-up on our budget process to see how we're doing. We do have some moderate adjustments to the budget that I'm going to go over briefly and share with your board. Right now, everybody asks me how we always doing on the budget. Right now, we're doing good. That's always a good place to be compared to years previously. Why it's actually good, we're seeing increases in our revenues that we weren't anticipating. So we are seeing a lot of extra revenue coming in. I'm going to go over those in a bit. We always like to still make one-time revenue for one-time expenditures. Some of those additional revenues, we are going to consider one-time, so we'll utilize those in the future. I'm happy to report, we're still meeting and exceeding all your policies on budget with the board, so that's always good. And we're proposing a budget increase from final budget of 3.88%. My personal rule is we like to keep that within about 5%, just things, things tightened up between what your board approved at budget time. So a little bit of information about how we're doing on that revenue I just mentioned. Secured property tax and sales tax, both looking very solid right now. We're usually at about the 50% point this time of year. 55 and 56% aren't exactly huge percentages. What do you apply to a larger number? That's very good for the county's revenue. Probably the more significant things going on while they're smaller numbers is our transient occupancy tax, property transfer tax, and our tipping fees. Obviously, still a lot of people traveling, staying in our hotels. A lot of properties still moving in the county on the real estate side. And always when we have the large fires in our regions, we see a lot of tipping fees at the landfill. So while those are continuing to probably be large throughout the years, we'll watch those. But that's where we're seeing some pretty significant increases on a percentage base. Separate of all that, all of our other revenues and expenses are actually on track, which is always a good point at mid-year. Going to your board's reserves and contingency, this is our county savings account for any surprises. We still are maintaining the general fund reserve of 4.7. That's what your board increased this last budget year. We also set aside extra money for economic uncertainty at 2.5 million. Those are essentially our rainy day funds. And when we do adopt the budget, we do adopt a general fund contingency for surprises throughout the fiscal year, which is exactly what we're going to be talking about now. Your board does budget for those moderate increases as we go throughout the year for anything unexpected. We are proposing in the mid-year budget adjustment to use roughly 12% of that 1.6 million. So even though your board does set aside some funds for surprises in the general fund, we're only proposing using just a piece of that. So where does our budget transfer request, overall 10 million, come into? A lot of that is one-time money coming from other one-time pots outside of your general fund. Health and Human, obviously a huge part of our budget, one of our largest agencies in the county, just under 5 million, looking at new positions, some workspace reconfigurations, some programs and some new contracts. Following them is Administrative Services. That's going to be a solar project for about 3 million. That project's still going to come back to your board shortly as soon as we finalize the scope of work. Our Sheriff's Department putting more money into Measure K expenditures and some more work there. Our ongoing issues we have with overtime, doing some expansion out of animal care, and probably more importantly, the Sheriff's Department purchasing a SWAT vehicle. Your board already approved previously in the fiscal year to actually pay off some debt, always a good thing, of 3.4 million. That was associated with the sheriff's facility, so your board already took that action. We've made a budget adjustment for that. And believe it or not, in a rare instance, sometimes we look at the budget and actually pull some budget back. Community Development proposed a number of different CDBG items that we're actually going to table and rebudget next year because we thought we could implement in this fiscal year. Turns out, we're not, so those are going to roll over to the following fiscal year. So we're actually seeing a reduction there. So part of that general fund contingency, we talked about the 1.6 million, which is that 12%, we're talking about only using just a tick under 200K. This actually sees how it gets spread around, a little bit going to probation. That's for that AB 1869, some fines and fees went away, so the county is backfilling that. The state might make that up one day. I'm not holding my breath. Otter Controller, another 52K, that's for a position that was created to help us implement the financial system. Very excited about that. Administrative Services is having a small reduction because we're moving the airport under Public Works, so they're seeing that decrease. General Government, unanticipated expenses. We are budgeting 25K for some organizational assessment that's going on in the county. We haven't quite solidified that work yet, but that's going to be looking at administrative, IT, and some other things. Your Board of Supervisors did have an adjustment with some salary and benefit true-ups for your board for salaries and benefits, and Public Guardian with a modest increase for salary and benefit increases, staffing changes. And this was our department head changing over in that area, and then a routine audit to make sure the books were clean with the changeover. So separate of all the budget adjustments, we have some other adjustments on top of that in form of personnel. We generally don't want to throw in a whole lot of positions at mid-year. Your board hasn't done that historically. We did want to keep that at a moderate number this year, but in doing it now, it gives HR a chance to get started on those positions and those recruitments, given that hiring is particularly challenging right now. But Administrative Services, they're looking at four new positions and one transfer out for that airport move to community development. Community Development is getting four new, with one of those coming in being the airport, and then Health and Human proposing 10 new positions for all those things we mentioned earlier. Separate of all that, we have the capital assets. These are some of those one-time things I was talking about, and that goes across multiple departments, Administrative Services, Health and Human, IT, and Sheriff's Department. And that's all detailed out in the attachment with your staff report. So that's definitely the down and dirty. We're proposing four different actions from the board. I'm talking to council. We'd like you, the board, to take these as four separate items with your motions, please, just for clarity on those. And most importantly, I want to thank staff and all the departments, all the fiscal staff and the department heads that helped us put all this together. It is quite an effort to consolidate this, bring this to your board, and particularly CEO, staff, and Michelle Logan that helps us get this all together to present to your board. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
I have a couple. I apologize. So tell me what's going on with the airport?
So we're moving the airport over into Community Development under Public Works. That's not an unusual place for the airport to be with everything that Administrative Services has going to focus on its internal efforts. We thought that's a good move to actually put the airport under Public Works so they can focus on that, and then that relieves that oversight for Administrative Services to focus on more internal issues. Sutter, I believe, organizes their airport that way as well, so that's not entirely unusual. But it's simply just moving the division from under one shop over to another.
Okay, so basically the staff stays the same, no other important changes. Will they still be located at the airport?
Correct, yes. It's simply just you, there is a chain that we work to.
There was a mention earlier by, a public comment about a contract on our copiers, I understand? Is that something that is part of this, or is that something that we're going to be seeing later?
I believe the comment was on an RFP that had actually gone out. I'd actually have to check with Administrative Services on that as far as the comments that were made in public of like how that rolls up to any budget changes.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions, comment from the public? So back to the board, for clarity, as Sean indicated, this is actually four separate items with four separate votes. So let's take a look at item number one to the board.
I'll move to approve the proposed mid-year budget transfers in the amount of $10,804,433.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
And Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item number two.
I'll move to approve the proposed mid-year personnel requests.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item number three.
I'll move to approve the proposed mid-year capital asset requests.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Item number four.
I'll move to approve the-
I'll move to approve the proposed mid-year contingency request in the amount of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fur?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Moving on to board staff member reports. Andy?
Nothing.
Don?
Yeah. District two, I don't know how many of you were aware of the transformation of the Hollywood Park or at least part of it into a wildflower garden? If you didn't have a chance, uh, it's on my phone. But it was pretty, uh, pretty amazing. So thank you to, um, I guess, uh, the Fire Department had a, a large hand in that, I believe. And, uh, it's, uh, if you go down to first, no, second and A and go over the levee, uh, it's, uh, right in full bloom right now. So they had the gates open, uh, Saturday and there was quite a few people down there able to walk through it. So we should try to get a first and, or before and after shot on that.
Very good. Is anyone living down there or is it just a walk-through day park? Is that?
It's a walk-through. There's nobody down there except flowers.
Love it.
It's nice.
Very nice. Thank you. Seth?
I'd like to move that we have a special meeting on Tuesday at eight forty-five AM.
Uh, let, let me get back with you on that to make sure that our calendars, I'm tied up at that time. Uh, so, uh, until we have the opportunity to really scrutinize our, um, calendars for five individuals, I, I would prefer that we have, uh, I'll send out some several dates and making sure that everyone's calendar is available.
All right. Well, we're all here anyway for the Water Agency meeting, right?
At night.
We, we are. Depending on the length of the discussion that could interfere with the nine o'clock meeting, um, how long do you feel that that meeting is going to go on?
Thirty minutes.
I would give at least thirty minutes because I imagine there'll be, there may be public comment depending on how, uh, the US Sutter Arts Board, the action they take. So I, it, you know, if, if depending on the action they take, it may be a five-minute meeting. If, if depending on the action they take, it could be a thirty-minute meeting. So.
So if you'd like to move that to an eight forty-five meeting, that should be adequate to actually cover if it's actually a thirty minute. I, I'm good with that. The, the rest of the board?
You said an eight thirty?
Eight forty-five. Excuse me, eight fifteen. That gives us forty-five.
Okay.
It gives us forty-five minutes, uh, to put that together.
All right.
If Seth would, uh, I, I would certainly support an eight fifteen.
I amend my motion to be eight fifteen.
Although I think it'll be a five-minute. I think it's just consensus, right? Consensus. Yeah.
I was told whenever Seth needed to do something, it had to be a motion.
If you want to add something to an agenda during your brief comments, then that is done through a motion by the board. If you want to set a special meeting, I believe our board procedures allow the chair to set a special meeting at any time. However, you're all here. If you'd like to do it by motion, by all means, proceed.
Did, did you want to do it by motion?
So, so did I hear a motion for eight fifteen next Tuesday? I think I hear, heard that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very good. That will take care of it. We're good. Okay.
Gary? Uh, I don't have anything this week.
You, you're back from vacation?
I am back. Vacation was great. Um, I will be at a conference at our next board meeting. So I'll be unavailable on the, I don't know, whatever that date is. Thank you. March eighth. Yes. Already talked about that date. So I'm glad we're having a special meeting.
Very good. County Council, do you have any comments?
No, thank you, sir.
CAO?
Nothing that, other than I, I'll, I'll take note of evaluating with council and HR, Administrative Services are, are noticing to the public as well as to our employees to make sure we're Cal OSHA compliant as well as, uh, compliant with direction from the board.
Very good. Thank you. Mary, any comments?
Nothing. Thank you.
And I have no comments today. I think I've probably made enough comments. So from here, we move to closed session. There are four items. I won't read through each one of them. They are public and, um, we will be back after closed session.
Yubisutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.